We're on. I'd like to call to order the Johnson County Council monthly meeting for November 12th, 2024. Amy, would you do real call, please? Present?
Present.
Present.
Here.
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 Mr. Bates, would you do indication for us, please?
Shall we all rise? Well, we're thankful for the time we have together here tonight. We're certainly more of our heads and more important our hearts to you, the Creator of the universe, Lord, and the Sustainer of life. And we are gathered here together to think about the great blessings that we have living in this country. And we pray, Lord, for protection for our leaders across the land, the highest office here to our meeting here in Johnson County tonight. Lord, we especially pray for employees who put their life on you every day in terms of supporting the citizens of our county. We pray especially for our first responders as well, as they also put their life on the line today and first in line to protect us. Lord, during each and every day, we just ask that you give a special blessing to them as they serve us in that capacity. We're thankful now that we are able to be here to represent you on behalf of the citizens of our county. And we ask that this will be done if you give us the wisdom to accomplish it. So we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Say the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I also would like to recognize our veterans. Yesterday, we had Veterans Day. Those that have served our country and made sacrifices for our freedom.
Yes.
Ask for a special blessing this evening for those folks and their families. Watch over our country with everything that's going on and for everybody here that calls at home. So, thank you to our veterans. All right, we're moving on to approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Amy, are there any additions or subtractions that you are aware of? Yes, I'd like to add one additional item under new business, item number seven, brief discussion with council on the possibility of retaining outside counsel moving into So if there are no other additions or subtractions, will I accept a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We will now open the portion of the meeting for public comments. It's limited to five minutes per person. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to come to the podium and speak to us this evening, we would now like to welcome you. No one coming to the podium. We will move on to item B on the agenda, which is approval of ordinance 2024-11. It's the second reading. It's an ordinance granting the recorder's request to use monies from the recorder's perpetuation fund to pay operating expenses, the recorder's office salaries, perf, social security, and medical plan expenses in 2025. It's pretty standard, the second reading. It's pretty much.
Approved.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
A second by Mr. Dear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C is routine matters. This is our consent agenda. And by a single motion, the board approves all of these items, which may include salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. And any items listed on the consent agenda may be removed by a council member and moved to the regular agenda for further discussion. I have viewed each of them, and I don't find anything that I would like to move. So I'll open the floor for anyone else who has anything they would like to discuss or
Move to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
A second by, was that Mr. Dear? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to D, salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. First up is Circuit Court.
Hi, Sheena. Hi, Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator. I have a couple requests here. The first is to ask for additional appropriations for interpreter services. Ran out of money, guys. I'm going over those every bill with a fine-tooth comb. I found $2,500 with errors in the last batch, so just keep cranking along, but.
Costs of doing business?
Yeah.
Have you thought about taking up on foreign language?
I have considered it, but I don't have time because I'm too busy getting over the bills, so I haven't had time to take up my new language.
You're not as enthused about that as you were six months ago.
I'm doing my best. I don't know.
I assume this is Spanish, correct?
Oh, no, no, no. It is Spanish, Punjabi, Hindi, Burmese, Hakachin, Falamchin, Mizochin, ASL, CDI. A new one I heard about today that I can't remember what it's called, Lingola? Sahili? I've heard of Sahili. French, Haitian, Creole.
Enough.
Yeah. It's a lot of languages.
So we have several that.
Yeah, so the company that we pay for interpreting, they are like a hub, okay? So we contact them and say, hey, we need an interpreter for this language, and they send somebody out. So that part is very convenient. There are other parts that leave something to be desired, but there are also not a lot of companies out there that do this, so.
And I assume that government-related has to do with.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so it's for the courts. So these are for court hearings.
Of course. Thank you.
I know in the hospital, we've used a service where we call and we punch a number for a certain language, and they get an interpreter on the phone, and we just put them on speakerphone.
Yes, and we are able to use our, it's called Language Line. We do have an account. We're able to use that through the Supreme Court. When we're talking about a more substantive hearing where somebody's going to lose their rights, we've got to make sure they're protected, they need to be read their probation terms, things like that, we need to have somebody actually there to explain it to them, so.
So you're also paying their mileage? Is that how that works?
Yeah, it depends. So if it's over 80, if it's, we pay mileage, it's over 80 miles, they also tack on travel time. So I've got, I've got one particular interpreter. It's a two-hour minimum. They come from 100 miles away, so it costs me $90 times two for the interpreting, $90 times two for the travel time, and $100, or 100 miles times 67 cents a mile. So how much is that to get them in the door? Over $400.
What language is that one for?
That one's Punjabi.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
And this is just to the end of the year?
Okay, so they're way behind on billing.
Okay.
And part of it is because of the delay when I ask for revisions and corrections, the delay in them getting them back to me in the correct fashion. So I'm still paying like July bills because of that.
Okay.
So that's part of it. And I still do have, I think, I don't think I've used all my money in my interpreter fund, but I was just estimating that I would need that much more to get through the end of the year.
But the 40 carries you through tax billings?
Yes.
And through the end of the year, right?
That's the intent.
As far as whatever happens from now on.
Yeah, if it doesn't, they'll just have to wait. That's where we're at. I mean, that's where we're at.
Do you recall what you budgeted for next year?
50. But then I'll also ask for the grant, I'll write for the grant, so that would be a fiscal year, so that would kick in July 1st if they're, if they give me that grant. So we'll see, Pam. I know where you're going there. Yes, sir.
Move to approve item D1, Circuit Court, 10010131, $40,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Myers and a second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Of course. And I have the next one, I believe, as well.
Okay.
The 8252.
Can you speak up, Sheena? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'll get closer. So the 8252, that's the federal grant, you remember, from the, from the BJA. So we've got three salaries in there, plus the bike of the perf and the health insurance. So I'm asking for 5% on two of those positions, 4% on the other to match what we are paying the other program therapists in the county.
And this is the same grant, right?
It's that big four-year, $700,000, $5,000 grant, yeah.
Okay. No, I'm prepared for a motion.
Move to approve the drug court adult A through I, number two, A through I, as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I hope I won't see you next month. I'm kidding. Thank you.
Nice.
Hi, Betsy.
Hi.
Hey, thanks for getting back with me the other night.
Sure. Betsy Swerengen, Director of the Health Department. I'm here today to ask to spend some grant funds on an XRF machine. That is a gun that is, picks up lead-based paint in residential and commercial buildings. This is, we now have a licensed lead inspector on our staff, and she will need this to do her job. And we could, originally, we could borrow one from the state, but since the HFI funds came out, they want every health department to get their own. So we had some funds that we can pay for this out of the grant, and we would like to purchase one.
Is this out of ARPA funds?
They're, it's, I think they're more COVID funds, but it's got that weird ARPA title in it.
Okay.
Okay, but they're more COVID funds.
Okay. Is this something that has to have like a software program with it?
Yeah, we're working, it's the whole kit and caboodle. We bought our, we got the quote from, it's been through legal, and we got the quote from the State Department of Health because that's what, it's the equipment they use, it's the vendor that they use that they trusted over the years. We were approached by Morgan County about whether or not they might want to go in with us to purchase this, and we thought better of that because, so we lend it to them, or they take it, and what if they, who broke it? So we just feel like we have the grant funding for it, and would be better if we had it, and then we can assist them when they need it.
I see.
So, Betsy, when you have an elevated level, what do you do?
Well, that actually just dropped from 10 to 5, so our case management has greatly increased. So Annie will reach out, and she will, from our, Annie from our nursing department, will do a, an assessment over the phone with the kids. They, sometimes they come in, sometimes it's over the phone, whichever works better for the parents. We will retest, we will see what the behavior pattern is in the child, and then we go environmentally to the home to see if the home is the source of the problem.
And then do you test water?
That gets real, no. No, because most public utilities test the water, and it meets that lead. Now, Indiana American Water just did release a statement in the past couple of days about lead in certain pipes. And so once it passes the meter and it comes into that residence, then it becomes the owner's responsibility on it. So it's real, we can get water tested through the state. We usually, if we use this XRF machine, have a better way of figuring out where it's coming from.
So then if you test, if it tests positive, what do you, what happens next?
We just walk the, we just walk the family through the way to remediate the property or to hire.
And what if they don't do that?
Then, we've not really ever had that happen, but I would assume that would become a child, a DCS case at that point of endangerment if you're not trying to improve your child's health.
Okay.
I can't say that for a fact because it hasn't happened, but I would assume that that's the avenue that we would pursue.
Interesting, a side note, 45 years ago, I started the first lead inspection program at the Marion County.
Marion County.
Forty-five years ago.
I think it's so interesting how it transfers. I think the neatest case or the most interesting case was a little girl kept testing high for lead and couldn't figure out what it was. They were painting the exterior of her house, and the dust particles would get on the dog, and the dog would come in and lay with her at night. And so it was the dog that.
Now, I can tell you, I don't know if that's what you're doing here, but we did it. We enforced it through the housing inspection.
Right. We, we, we don't really enforce anything. We're more guidance, and right now, we, like I said, we've not had the problem of having to enforce it. We've had good compliance.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Ready for a motion, please?
I'm making a motion to approve 21027 ARPA, elevated blood level, lead 8953.
I have a motion by Mr. Dear.
Second.
A second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the CHIRP grant, and Angela called me, and she will not be able to be here this evening. So this basically is the comprehensive highway injury reduction program that we've been doing for years. It's a federal funding that supports traffic safety projects and such as reduced speeding, enforced impaired driving laws, support pedestrian safety, so on and so forth. And this money then is distributed to different entities in the county, correct, Amy? Like Greenwood, Franklin? Okay. So really not a whole lot of questions to have, other than it is something we get, we've gotten it since I was here, so I'm assuming it'll be ongoing for a while, so.
So we're appropriating this, correct?
Right, it's a grant, federal grant.
Who are we appropriating to?
We're appropriating it to, the grant number would be, we, the checks are dispersed through the auditor's office.
Reimburse the, over time, that like City of Franklin, City of Greenwood, Sheriff's Department, whoever was working this program.
When they work, when they do these programs, they're labeled under the CHIRP, under this, this grant. So then when they turn that information in, they're paid from this money, which is a federal grant.
So they cost code like when they're out on the road or something?
Right. Right. Isn't it a lot, also like the old Operation Pullover, and they have different blitzes and things?
Yeah, they kind of do, like O-K-O-D-U-I.
Yeah. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda, adult probation, I believe juvenile probation and supplemental juvenile probation. I believe that all goes together. Amy, isn't that also Angela Morris?
Yeah, the last one was Angela Morris, but these three devices.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was a pass through, yep. We did not discuss these, so can, are you, can you tell us a little bit about them?
What's these, that page number?
Okay, it's D5. Okay, so the D5 one says, "When she took over as chief probation officer in January of 2019, this process was set up with her predecessor and a previous counsel. She worked with Amy to follow the same format that has been put in place. Probation collects statutory administrative and supplemental fees in four different funds." She's listed those fund numbers. "The reimbursements below have almost zeroed out in funds due at this time, and she did not do a reimbursement in 2101 in the user fee. Since most of the probation expenses exclude salaries, I am more than happy to meet with anyone to go over the process. I am also completely open if there is another process or method to reimbursing the county."
So are all of these fees, fee funds?
Yes, these are, this is money she's giving back to the county, correct?
Which one is?
From.
They're all fee funds, and years ago, they used to pay, or used directly from these funds, but then the funds would go, you know, the, 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 the,
If you can come up with something, we would love to hear it. I'm glad, though, to see that money coming, that money coming back. I really am. Any further discussion? Mr. Dipmers wants to be on the agenda to give a new guideline next month.
I think he should make the motion.
If no further discussion, I'm prepared for, are open for a motion?
I'll move to approve item D five through D seven. Fee funds that are presented.
A motion by Mr. Myers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you. Item number eight on the agenda, pre-trial diversion program. I believe that's Mr. Hamner.
It's a wash, though, right? I didn't want to make that grand entrance.
I was waiting on it. I was waiting on it.
Lance Hamner, Johnson County Prosecutor. Wanted to start out by telling you that we, just today, lost another deputy prosecutor. And I've had an add-up for two and a half months now. I got two resumes, one from somebody who was nearly at the bottom of her class, flunked the bar, and the other one from somebody who's been out of law school two years, has tried three jury trials and lost all three. That's what we're getting. This bidding war with other prosecutors' offices is nonstop. One of the things that I'm trying to do is, most prosecutors' offices generally, and our county the same thing, intended to have the courthouse annex to house the prosecutor's office so that they could walk to court and not have to drive and get reimbursed. And nobody's been reimbursing our deputy prosecutors for their driving back and forth because it doesn't seem like that much of a distance. But I did, I ran a bunch of numbers. And I figured out travel expenses are now 67 cents per mile. Prosecutors required travel to courts, four trips per day per prosecutor. Bottom line is, that comes out to over 49 weeks. Eighteen adult court prosecutors, two juvenile court prosecutors, comes out to 8,154 miles per year. So that comes out to about $5,400 a year if we did reimbursements, which by law were required to give them. Same thing with victim advocates. It comes out to, do all the math, it comes out to about $800 a year. My solution was, I would like to have a little electric cart, which is kind of like a golf cart. We have the money in our discretionary fund. We'd like to get one. And that money that I have put on our, in our agenda for tonight, is simply coming from another account. And I'd like to have that freed up to be able to get that cart. And that way, at least one of the, we'll try that out and see if that's helpful. And then people won't have to be driving back and forth in their personal cars and getting reimbursements.
A golf cart?
Yeah, it's kind of like a golf cart. Yeah, I felt like, may I approach the bench?
He was kidding. But yes, you're free to come to, talk to the council.
See what they look like. They kind of look like golf carts. They're closed and they're heated and air-conditioned, so they're all electric. And it's about $8,000. $900, something like that. So because we don't have to pay tax on it, it's pretty much the price is what you get it for. So we thought we'd try that as a way to get our people transported back and forth. And that's what I'm doing here today. And I have discretionary money there that we're just transferring from one account to another to do it. That's all I'm here for. I could do a poem for you, if you would like.
You would?
I'm just kidding.
Pass. The wheels, the wheels on the cart go round and round.
That's what they tell me, you know? And I sure hope they do.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion.
Okay.
Okay?
Please.
I do have several questions. Who wants to go first?
I just wonder, is this going to be okay on snow and ice?
It's like a little car.
Okay.
And as you guys know, those who know me best, before, from 2012 to 2018, I drove a little smart car. Just because when gas shot up, and I won't mention which president, but you know what I'm talking about. I decided I wasn't going to pay that kind. So I've had those little cars and they work great. And this is just from our office to the courthouse, back. And it takes up way less parking space.
Well, I did do some research, if you can believe that. I did some research and I did see that, at least for the last two years, no one has claimed any mileage coming back and forth to the courthouse.
Right.
What did we decide, what did we, our numbers were .5? Was it going from?
Half a mile.
Half mile, about a half mile.
Right, that's exactly right. It's about a half a mile.
Yeah. So there's a lot of people down there. How are you going to determine? And I don't want you to answer these. These are just some of the questions that ran through my mind, okay? And then we can circle back around.
It carries four people, I think.
Okay. But the schedules are different, correct? I mean, all your, all four people don't go at the same time every day, right?
A lot do.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Melinda asked the question about weather considerations. What about security and safety? Storage, maintenance?
We, okay, good question. The, our office where we are now has a bay, actually has two bays in it, where the, where the maintenance people keep their tractors and stuff like that. There's plenty of room, tons of room.
And how, this won't go under the commissioner's fleet any way? Or have you talked to them about it?
I already talked to them about it.
And they're in support of it?
They even gave me a, an advance, not an advance, but an increase in the credit card so that I can pay for it without having to, because these companies, at least this company, doesn't like to send you the product and then wait forever to get, you know, for the invoice to go through. So they up the.
So am I hearing you say you've already purchased it?
No, no, no. I've just been talking to them. And I even told them, I said, "Look, it's government, for crying out loud. They're going to pay it. Now, we don't do that." Okay, you know, try to argue with somebody, you just can't do it.
Do you have an estimate of what you think the cost is going to be over and above the $9,000 purchase price? With maintenance, additional electricity, whatever? Do you have an idea?
I think it would be almost, to use a Latin term, de minimis. It would just be recharging it and it's just that, that trip. So I think the only thing we're dealing with is, we know that, I'm not trying to sound like Mr., what's the person that ran on the Green Party? I'm not that guy. But I just think that in that short trip, an electric vehicle is more efficient probably than a car.
I just wondered if tires go bad, batteries go bad, whatever. There's always something that can go bad on that. Is that, I mean, is there any discussion? I mean, have you done any research of it? Have you looked at maintenance costs?
They talked about it being almost nonexistent.
Okay.
And I'm not a golfer. I don't know about, you know, how much maintenance people put into golf carts, but I see people driving them all over the place. And this is kind of like a step up because you can use it year-round. It's designed to be used year-round. I'm sorry.
I thought in previous budgets that there is a prosecutor car. Isn't there a prosecutor car?
Yeah, we have, but we have 17 prosecutors.
Well, but that car doesn't put any more people in it than a golf cart.
Are you talking about using the prosecutor's car for them transporting?
I don't know whose car it is. There is a car allocated to prosecutor's office.
That's, we would use that for like trips, long trips and things like that. This is cheaper and it's quicker and it only takes up a little bit of space. We're not talking, and my point is, we're not trying to get, this is discretionary money. It's diversion money. That's why I'm saying we want to do this because I think it's going to be faster, quicker, and it's easy to do.
Do you have to get it plated and all that, I would think, for the roads to be legal, right?
Do they plate those golf carts?
I have to.
Yeah, but they're not supposed to be out on like 135 or anything.
Yeah, well, you know, they wouldn't be doing that.
I don't think it's through the license branch. I think it's through like the town.
Here and back, yeah, that's all it is.
There is requirements to ride in the city of Franklin. I mean, that would be a question for the Franklin city attorney, but there are requirements.
And I did talk to the Franklin city attorney and they're like, "It looks like a green light to me." So I've covered all those bases.
Is there, is there just going to be one or are you going to want more than one?
Well, I'm going to do the one. And if we really, really love this concept, then we might do more.
Okay.
And we would probably be using forfeiture money to do it in the future. Forfeiture money, as you know, comes from drug deals and stuff like that. And we can use it for law enforcement and it's prosecutor discretion.
So you're just not, you're just not going to, not need $15,000 in part-time money?
Is that what it, if we need it, we haven't, we got to the end of the year and then it re, and so during this next two months, no. We wish we could get more people. We've tried to get law students to come in, so we just haven't used it. So it's there, so that's what we're trying to do.
So what would happen to that money? Let's say you didn't buy a golf cart. What would happen? And I know that it is pre-trial diversion. So let's say you didn't approach us for this. What would have happened to that $15,000?
It just starts all over again the next year.
So you don't lose it? It doesn't go back?
Correct.
Okay.
By statute, it stays in the prosecutor's realm.
I just couldn't remember whether it was you use it or lose it or whether it stays there and.
Nope, I can't make that argument.
People been turning mileage in for a half-mile trip?
Nope. But if they did, it would be an absolute nightmare for the auditor's office. And they're statutorily required to pay. And all they have to do is start doing it. And now we're going to have basically a full-time person processing all of these.
They used to do it. They used to do it a long time ago. But what they did is they would do it once a year for everybody. And that was a disaster. So I think, stop me here if I'm wrong, but I think after that, when that was questioned and we tried to develop a new way, I think it just went by the wayside. So at one point in history, some point, they did claim it. But it was hard to keep track of to turn it in for everybody once a year.
I can tell you when that started. It started after the first flood, the real big flood. Not the many little floods that moved us from building to building, but the one that collapsed our building. After that, we were across the street from Walmart. And then it was long trips every single day. And that was a nightmare.
Yep.
We tried to get everybody, or to get the council to build us a tunnel and shoot people through on a. John's looking at me like.
There used to be a tunnel from the jail to the courthouse.
That would be awesome.
Right?
Well, I have to tell you, the taxpayer in me is saying, "What? A golf cart?"
Yeah. Well, it would have been used on a golf course.
Yeah. But, you know, you've brought forth, you're paying for it with money that you have. You've justified it. You've answered all the questions. So I'm going to leave it up to everybody else to ask questions or move this forward? Or what, what motion do you want to make?
Explain the discretionary part to me a little bit. It's the prosecutor's discretion.
The diversion money is to use prosecutor's discretion to assist the prosecutor's office in any and all functions, but mainly for salaries and equipment and things like that. And of course, it has to be appropriated by the, by this body.
Thank you.
But it's not like you could say, "Well, you know, why don't we build a library with it?" It's by statute, it has to advance the prosecutor's office.
I do have another question. You've got, how many people that, and you're in and out every day at the courthouse? And this is sitting at the courthouse because four people are down there. And you've got people that are going to be there next, wherever the need is the next time. Don't we still have the mileage issue? Because the capacity of this thing's not going to take care of all the needs.
It's not, no, it's not going to cover everything for right now. And I haven't given anybody a green light to start exercising their statutory rights and get reimbursement. I'm kind of like, hold off. I think we can get this problem fixed. So that's where we are right now.
So is it going to be a group of people go over and it just sits there? Or is it going to be more like a shuttle service where someone's going back and forth as needed to pick people up?
I think both.
Okay.
Is there any other prosecutor's office that you are aware of in the state of Indiana that has this?
Thanks for asking. Answer is no, because the prosecutor's offices are across the street from the courthouse. So they just walk. We're the only ones, we built that courthouse annex, filled it up with all the other government people who never go to court, and then took the people who go to court every day, multiple times a day, and moved them way down the street. And I understand why all that happened, floods and stuff that happened. But it's kind of created a weird hybrid situation here where we're the, pretty much the only prosecutor's office in the state, with the exception of Marion County, where you have the building where the prosecutors practice law is away from the courthouse and not within walking distance. Used to be in Marion County, when I was a deputy prosecutor there, we were in the same building. We'd just ride the elevator and go to court. But they built that other thing over there. And now they are having to drive back and forth and they've got these issues. But I don't know of anybody else besides us and Marion County that has this problem.
Well, thank you for explaining that. A normal taxpayer probably wouldn't, wouldn't be aware of that.
I understand. I had somebody ask me on Facebook, I'm not encouraging people to do this, but asking me about what's going on in, in Delphi and why they didn't do a death penalty case and that. And I was thinking, you know, people don't know this stuff. And so I took the opportunity to explain it. But it is one of those things that if you're just looking at it as, not even a complete outsider, but somebody who's not in that milieu, you're going, "Why did they do this? Why did they need this?" And so thanks for asking those questions.
And stress again, for the people listening and the public, this is money that is under your jurisdiction to do as needed for the prosecutor's office. It's not coming from the general fund.
Exactly. By statute, it is generated through the prosecutor's office.
And what are the sources of these funds?
This, this is specifically diversion. So if.
Like?
I'm going to make up a name, like we do.
Traffic tickets that you don't want to get to go under your insurance or something like that?
Yeah, except this would be misdemeanors. So if somebody does something like gets drunk and gets arrested and would probably get a fine and costs instead of jail time, he can get a diversion. And instead of sending all that money to the state, they keep it right here and it helps run the criminal justice system.
And there's enough money in here to meet other obligations to where you won't have to come back and ask for?
That's why we just did a small little amount here to see how it works.
All right. It's going to be in a sidebar ratio. I saw you on Pox 59 about the Delphi case and you did, did a good job.
Thank you. Did I sound lucid?
Well, you kept saying, "What did you say?"
I wasn't hoarse yet, was I? So I'm hoarse now, so.
Any further discussion?
Just to verify, it falls under fleets, insurance, and that's the umbrella insurance coverage? Who's eligible to drive it, all that?
That's, yeah, I'm covering all that with the commissioners.
Okay.
It doesn't fall under our insurance or our funds? He will provide the insurance.
Okay.
So separate?
We just title it in our, in the commissioners, has to be, under our statute, it has to be titled under the Johnson County Commissioners.
So you guys are aware of what's going on, though, basically, and have supported Lance's decision to do this? Okay?
To quote them, they said that crazy prosecutor's got another scheme going on.
So I was just thinking.
I actually think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Golf carts, I'm surprised somebody else hadn't thought of it earlier.
Thank you.
Golf carts can't be driven on city.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the first motion. Your golf cart request.
I was answering, I was answering her question. The golf carts can't be used on city streets.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or any other questions for Mr. Hamner or the commissioners while they're here?
Nope.
If not, I'm prepared for a motion.
Okay, I'll make the first motion for your, your first golf cart request to go back and forth.
A motion by Ms. Grissimer has been made.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor? Say aye. I'm going to say aye reluctantly. Passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to see it in a parade.
Okay, if I can be, I was saying, I told people in my office, I'm going to go in there and tell them I want lights and siren. And when they go, "No," then I'll go, "Okay, I'll just take a strip-down model." But thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. Other business. We're ready for E approval of an interlocal agreement with the town of Bargersville. Amendment and addendum to interlocal corporation agreement concerning road maintenance. This was on our agenda last month. And I think we, we tabled it because the commissioners had some issues. So it looks like Mr. Walls is coming to the podium to let us know what's going on.
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. All three of us have looked at this and bounced back and forth with Bargersville. But we're going to, I don't know if you know the long story, that during the annexation wars between Greenwood and Bargersville, they were grabbing everything. So Bargersville grabbed a bunch of roads. And they found out, they caught the car and they don't know what to do with it. So we've been under agreement with them to maintain their roads and we get reimbursed for that. But there's an opportunity for them to get funding on a rural area of 144 that stands a better chance than we do of getting that funding. So this is pertaining to that stretch of road right there. And it gives, it's going to benefit the county along with Bargersville if they can do this. Because we go to the NPO with a lot of requests and they'll go with one. And this will be it. So they stand a better chance. So this is the strategy we're using for now.
Thank you.
One additional thing, the point of this is also to get the ball rolling for Bargersville to start taking over more of those roads long-term. So this is just kind of the first brick being laid in that whole process as well.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, sorry. It's Adam Gadberry, county attorney.
Is this a specific stretch?
625 over to 144, or 37, 69?
Thirty-seven.
Many different names.
Thirty-seven.
It's that stretch from right there. And it's under a different classification than going east from there. It's in a, the state has it chopped up into different sections. And it's a rural application, which is a better applicable fund to get, receive money from.
Did you say NPO? The applications to who? The Bargersville stands a better chance of getting approved?
Well, we have a lot of projects the county submits.
What do they go through? You mentioned it, I think you used.
It's, I'm going to say it wrong, so I won't even say it. I don't, it's the, the LPA, I believe.
I can't remember what.
You get the acronym heavy. It's the LPA is out there. It's a different funding source out there. And it stops, the break line is at 625.
Or state?
State.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to approve.
Yep. So we have a motion. Mr. Dipmers made a motion to approve item E1 as presented. And Mr. Myers has seconded it. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'll just stay here.
It's all right. Are you doing the Safety Commission Advisory Board for E911?
No, I'll let Heath come. I can do it if you want. Who are you going to appoint? Heath will come up.
Thank you.
Keith Brandt, 911 Director. Just here for recommendations to who you'd like to represent the council on the 911 Advisory Board.
Currently, it's Ron Deere. And that can continue as such. It's not dependent on his position on the council. It's just an appointment by the council. It may be a council person, but if you choose to keep, well, if you wanted to.
So that, I wasn't aware of that. So it can be a council person?
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a county.
It does not have to be per our ordinance.
That's up to you guys, but I, you know, it's been an experience. I've enjoyed it. You've earned a lot and you impact a lot. And that's your decision.
Are you willing to take the position, Mr. Deere?
I don't have anything else to do next year, so. It's actually, it's actually deserved to county. But if there's a council member that wants to serve, then that's fine.
I believe Mr. Deere has served well.
Quite well, yes.
So anyone have any questions or anyone have any other nominations or any discussion that they would like to have for the nomination?
I move, we nominate Ron Deere for that position.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Mallers to nominate Ron Deere to fill the Public Safety Communications Advisory Board E911. And a second by whoever you want to pick up here. I'll second it. Mr. Bates?
Under discussion, I'd like to add that the council funded it at $400 a month.
Motion to send. We'll accept that from you, Ron.
It's one of the unpaid positions, but.
All in favor for everything except the $400? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so will be Mr. Deere.
Thank you.
Continues, thank you. Continues, thank you. Okay, moving on to old and new business, we have an approval of ordinance 2024-12. This is an amendment, an amended salary ordinance. This is basically being done to clean up funds. Adam, did you feel you wanted to speak on that?
Yeah, so I think this past year, Amy and I talked, and we've been doing this amended salary ordinance as kind of, not every month, but just as, you know, different grants come in to their new fiscal years, we've been doing this. I think what we've now decided to do moving forward is to just have the amended salary ordinance lag a month behind, just on the off chance the council doesn't appropriate the request. That way we can, after you've taken final action, then we do the amended salary ordinance. So anyway, this particular ordinance is based off what the council voted on last month. And then I would anticipate another amended salary ordinance next month concerning, I have to get on the agenda, D, what was it, D2? So anyway, so this is, again, this is just what the council appropriated and took action on last month, and then we'll have another one for you at the next month to memorialize tonight's actions, so.
Any questions? Further discussion about the salary ordinance?
Move to approve salary ordinance as amended.
Have a motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dittmers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number two, Commissioners.
Hello, Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. We're here as a whole Commissioner Board to request a title change from County Coordinator to County Administrator. And I think you have all the paperwork to substantiate that instead of me reading back to you. So if you've got any questions, I'm here to answer as best I can. So.
That doesn't change any responsibilities or any?
It's reclassification of that job. It's been underclassified for years.
Well, I guess I'm gonna go first. I did review what WASP presented. I I reviewed everything forward and backwards, okay? So I just want to give my thoughts on the job title change. The previous job descriptions and the updated job descriptions and the memos from WASP, totally in agreement with, I don't disagree with that at all. Just want to revisit that in the 2024 budget process, this council requested that all departments would prepare and submit updated job descriptions to the auditor's office, I believe by November 15th. There was some conversation where they tried to do it another way through a committee. It didn't work. Toothpaste it back in the tube. Moved forward with it being done by November 15th for anyone feeling it needed to be done. And this was going to facilitate a county employee salary study with WASP and the results of that study would be used for the 2026 budget. So that was what we discussed during the budget. And that basically was agreed and was established that we would ensure consistency and fairness to all the departments, providing each employee with the same opportunity to update their job descriptions. I recognize that this job description change, if it is changed tonight, the process will be then to come back to bring the funds up to where they need to be rather than waiting to the budget process be an additional appropriation. So anyone else can have any discussion they want. I'm one of seven. I cannot support this. I won't support this because purely not that it's not justifiable, just in my opinion, it's stepping forward, like I'm sure Michelle's up next. She had one kind of the same way that was done incorrectly four or five years ago. So unless there's just something that I am totally not seeing, you went ahead and had WASP prepare this one separately and move forward with what we're anticipating to do for everybody in next budget, in the next budget, right?
Is this not the process you wanted us to go through with the new, you guys, we let you hire WASP to do this job salary study? And we did provide this to you.
And to be clear, this is, we have sent that request out again to all the departments because per your salary study that is already in process.
Yes.
This was already sent through.
Yes.
There have been no new requests. These were the only two, this one and the one that Michelle presented that had incorrect omissions. Previously, when we had the 62, which I have said a couple of times, especially to, I know Ron Deere and I have talked about this, they were not recalculations, they were, or reclassifications, they were additional job duties that that person kind of does. I spoke with Addy about this as well, where we reviewed these. These were the two that stood out that were omitted, qualifications for the job description as it is and as it should have been. So there wasn't, it's not the same, if that helps you clarify, I understand what you're saying, but these were, those were different than these two requests.
And these are the same discussions we had at budget time, correct?
Well, I don't think we're talking about the same thing about omissions. And there was a discussion, but I don't, you know, it's not the same as the 60 whatever that we had sent through with the Personnel Committee.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's all I, that's all I have, so I'll open it up to everybody else.
So may I?
Absolutely.
So this is where I differ. And it goes back to before the committee. And a lot of people worked hard on that. So this is a dilemma that we're faced with and I know that we've struggled with this as long as I've been here. So I always revert back to, I think it's the responsibility of the elected official. All those people that serve or at the pleasure underneath each elected official, I think it's a hard concept for everyone to understand in the county, how many elected officials there are. And all the people that work underneath the Commissioners, you have more people underneath you than anybody. But we have the court system, we have the sheriff. So all of these elected officials, all of these people underneath them serve at their pleasure. And we, as a council, I believe are taking away somewhat from that elected official when we reach in to them and say no. When it's regarding what that person does. So I don't know how else to say it, but I know we're responsible as a fiscal body, as seven people, to decide these issues and it's very hard. You know, we're talking about positions, not people. And we're deciding on personnel of 700 people. So is this body gonna sit there and go through job descriptions for 700 people?
And if it helps, I, part of what was allocated for 2025 is that HR position where I have gone through these, even though it's 2024, I have taken that very seriously, the lack of oversight previously from whoever, you know, presented that. I don't know how much oversight was through WASP, but there was no HR type oversight to catch these very detrimental errors to the position that we could not hire at that same, if something happens to that position, there's, there's, there's no way. So it needed to be corrected. And now that there is somebody that is in this office, it goes through the legal department. I've been in discussion with Addy, who's had a great relationship because of this new, moving forward, this initiative. So there is a difference this time with oversight and, like I said, those 60 positions that were put through, that's where it was discovered that this was a different type of error. And if there are some moving forward, we would address those as needed as well. I have, none of them have been brought to my attention. All the elected officials have the same information. We went over this in every single budget hearing. We went over this in the Personnel Committee and those various discussions. So if there is something that was omitted that that elected official could, was free to review and we've asked for review and the only ones that were caught were these two, so there is a difference.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Who wants to go next? Anybody?
I have a question. This is the same thing that we basically discussed during the budget process. And we basically said, we're not gonna do that because we have a plan in place for 25 going into 26, I believe is what we said. Knowing that the, knowing what we went through with our game plan, if you will, on the salary, tried to address this and I don't think we did a particularly, frankly, particularly good job of doing that. I do think we have a pretty decent plan moving forward here. Point is, we took a position on this and since then, it's kind of like, well, wait a second, let's reclassify it now instead of next year, which we already discussed, I think, that any reclassification we would look at going into 26. Yes, we did.
No, I just wanted to clarify, this isn't a reclassification that's new. This was a classification, classification that was done incorrectly. So that is a little bit of a difference and I wanted to make that clear, that when we had those, we sent this out to multiple departments, every elected official, they did have the opportunity to correct anything and decide if it was really a reclassification and that's where the error, so it is, it is different.
So it's not reclassified?
And the error has been for how long?
I actually don't know how long because I wasn't here when the original one was done. I would have to have a discussion with Addy, but at least since 2012.
It's been years.
So Tiffany, has it been reclassed or not, the role?
It has not been reclassified yet.
So
Because that would go, we're asking for a title change now, not a reclassification.
By definition, if we go through the title change, which I agree with, by the way, then that ought to, then that then justifies
The reclassification will
What we approved in the budget process.
The reclassification will happen when the process goes through with WASP and then it's, so it needs to match, the title change needs to match what has been submitted to WASP and what matches the statute for the position.
Okay, let me put layman's terms if I understand it correctly from Ron. The study is going to look at salary as they compare, and it's a salary study, to look at whatever the position is classified at. Any position that's not in contention, all positions, whether or not they're classified, whether or not their, their salary is in the proper realm as far as the 2026 budget, which is going to be done in 2025. That looks at all of them. I mean, whether it's a janitor or it's, you know, whomever, they're gonna be looking at those adjustments to see if they're at the right classification. That's what, part of what we've, we've employed them to do. I'll use a side issue here that came up this last year during budget time and that was the fleet, one guy in fleet where they were talking about, he has additional, they have, that position has additional qualifications, but not necessarily within the job description that that qualification takes the person to the next level. So that possibly could be addressed in a future salary issue as a sidebar. But that position, whatever it is, mechanic four or one or whatever, it doesn't require at this point in time that they have the brake certification or the motor certification or whatever. If the position requires that, that would be a job classification change, which is different than a salary study to look at salaries. Am I correct?
Yeah, and you bring up a good point that explains it a little better. What we have done for, is a salary study for the range. WASP is not writing job descriptions. That is the job of the department head or elected official, which is why I've asked several times, you know, please make sure that these are correct. It is not, it is not, you know, something I can change from your department. So when we looked at these, that's what came up with the change. It was incorrect, the job description was incorrect. And by correcting it, that is what's gonna take it correctly into the salary study. But the salary study is really talking about a range for that position as presented to WASP. And we need to make sure that the correct one is presented to WASP.
So I'd like to reiterate that this council is a fiscal body and all that we're discussing now are administrative issues. It's, it's placed in the wrong place. The administration should be another entity because we're gonna sit here as a seven-member body or somebody's gonna be outside of this making these decisions for us. And I just don't agree with it. And I'll keep saying that till the day I die.
Well, this is why I think that we need an HR person, a specific HR person. All right. I mean
It's redoing.
To stay on top of this, so this never happens again.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm trying to say is that that's what, that's how this came about because I've been doing that and that's what was allocated for 2025. We do, the Commissioners did approve a third-party HR service that will help us audit our HR and that would have been, you're absolutely correct, that that is something that would have been caught sooner.
Could the Commissioners, this is, maybe this will clarify it, what she just said, you've employed a third party to do what?
It's a HR audit and they are auditing the county services and elected officials on what we need to work on HR-wise and how we can improve our functions because they're, like we've discussed many times, that there are many departments that do different roles in HR, but because there's not a centralized department, we want to make sure that we are doing the best we can to prevent litigation and to like, to be HR forward with the county. So we need an audit to basically, we don't know what we don't know. We need to make sure where we're at as a county, so.
Not to interrupt you, but in an effort to rein this kind of back in on what we're voting on, we could discuss HR, not HR. I mean, I appreciate it, but I, I think let's limit, if you guys are okay with that, let's talk about the exact request. The request at this time is to change a job title based on the information WASP presented, based on, this has been done, this has been classified incorrectly for years and you want to correct it now as opposed to waiting to the next budget to do that, correct? Is that, that's the request?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I also assume based on your letter that once this is done, then you will come back then and ask for salary to be adjusted now rather than waiting for budget time when we do the other 62 that aren't part of the same thing.
Again, the 62 weren't re, there's nothing to suggest in any of those job descriptions that Adam and myself ever viewed to suggest that it would change their
But if they did, but if they did.
If they did, I would have known by now because I've asked for that information. So that's already been submitted to WASP. The 15th is the deadline. So at that point, there is no new job description that would be submitted. So like I said, they have been reviewed, there was nothing to suggest any reclassification. The salary study will be studied on the classification that it is. There are two that are incorrect that need to be corrected.
And we're doing, and the reason to do this now is to correct the problem now, except if this hadn't have been done, we would have gotten it when WASP presented it to us. They would have said, hey, you've got two job descriptions that are totally wrong and they need to be fixed.
You know, that we actually corrected them, not WASP. They wouldn't, is, is the elected official's job? So the treasurer corrected it and worked with me to make sure that it was correct. I worked with the Commissioners and Adam to make sure that ours was correct. So no, WASP would not have, and that is how it started in the first place, is that it wasn't corrected because it is the county's job to do the job descriptions, which we're not paying them to do as well. So that we could have, but we didn't.
And the only two that jumped out at, jumped out at you guys were these two?
Well, when we were, it was brought to our attention by the elected officials, yes.
Okay, I think
And the salary, the salary that's been recommended is an established salary?
We didn't get a salary recommendation specifically.
You will soon. If this gets changed, they will recommend a salary and classify it and you'll be back to ask for that to increase, correct? Okay, I just want to make sure everyone understands what the ask was today. So you said you had something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, we, we've referenced, you know, five years ago and that kind of fits into my tenure here. These five years started, you know, with COVID. So this county has been stuck in neutral for several years and we're just starting to pull out of that. And I, I think that, you know, that four or five years back you know, that four or five years back, when you look at where we were at that point in time, we, we had a lot of indecision and, and we were trying to look in that crystal ball and it was very difficult for us at that point in time and we couldn't be aggressive with budgets. So, we were very conservative and I think that some people got caught in that. And I think that maybe, I don't know how many, but I think these two probably are definitely a function of...
Thank you.
And I'm sorry if I've taken us back. I want to make sure I understand. The 62 or however many there are, what exactly were those and what were, those were?
Right. That's a good question. What we looked at, we asked for updated job descriptions, right? So, a lot of people sent those. That's where the 62 came from. And the way that it was presented was really a misuse of the language, like, "Do you want a reclassification?" But really what was presented was there were, it was just job descri, job duties, like, "I also go to court on this day" or "I also do this." But in order for a reclassification, you have to have a, a education requirement, some kind of experience level. And that's when, you know, because obviously, you know, unless, unless it's brought to our attention, I expect the elected official or the department head to know what is required of that job in that position. And when it was brought to us and when we looked at the county administrator, for example, very, very much a big-time error was that there was an education requirement that was left off, an experience level that has to be for that position. And so, that is a reclassification. Absent those new things added to the job description, it's not going to reclassify. It's just going to add to the position.
So, we asked people and to submit positions that needed new job descriptions?
Well, we just asked them to update.
And they gave us 62?
There's only 62 people that were...
And those went to WIS?
They are now, yes.
Okay. And WIS is going to do what?
They are going to read the job description and make, and set a salary range based on that position and a classification. So...
Okay. And then these two, did they go through that process? Did they go to WIS?
They are at WIS now.
Did WIS suggest these changes?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the packet.
The job description change, or the job classification changes?
Yes.
WIS, I thought I just heard that it was the...
Based on the information that was provided.
Okay. And this approves, agrees with that, is what you're saying?
Correct, yes. So, they've, they, you know, like I said, when I reviewed this and Ron can, we've had many discussions on this. When, when this first happened in November, like you correctly assessed from last year, when we got these 60, it was very apparent that they weren't reclassifications. They were just, "Make sure to know that I answer the phones on this" or "Make sure we put in here that part of your duty," which is, we have to update and we should because it's, it's important legal reasons that we have all the duties present. But it does not reclassify a position unless we're requiring an additional certification, some kind of professional license, education, experience level, or something that has to be done with that job. And when we reviewed these individually, that was not present. And then I also sent out another email saying, "Make sure to know this. Make sure that you understand this. Make sure to update this. If the elected official doesn't bring that to my attention, then there, there's really no way for us to know that."
And John, and John, you were on the, or John, you were on the committee. And I'll take the heat for it that it was the way that that memo that I sent out was back from the personnel committee was worded, that it was asking if you had any job reclassifications and it really should have said something like, "Do you need to clean up any of your job descriptions?" And I think it was interpreted by almost everyone to the T that they read it, "Well, reclassification, then, you know, we, we want these reclassified," but we were, really what we were re-asking, what I think we were asking at that point in time was to, "Are there job descriptions that you need to clarify?"
Let me ask this. Hypothetically, if there'd been 15 of these jo, of these job descriptions that had errors in them, would we be looking at 15 adjustments to what we approved inside the budget?
For this year or do you mean? I mean, you, I mean, in theory, yes, if you, if you wanted to.
So, we're doing now revisiting something that we already decided during the budget process. Are we not?
Well, it's not, I mean, I, I think we, I don't know how else to say it, I guess. These are reclassifications, the 60, and I did go over that with Addie as well at the time because I was learning, "Okay, this doesn't feel like a reclassification. Can you explain?" And we went over it together. It wasn't something that I just did on my own. So, yes, if we had 15, but what I'm saying is, everyone was given the same information and we had two.
I see. But if, if, it was hypothetical, if we had that, then we'd go back and we would revise everything we approved during the budget process as far as compensation is concerned because there were errors in the...
If you wanted to do that, if you wanted to do that and if they asked...
That's what we asked to do on these two, right?
Yeah, if they, if the elected official felt that, right?
Am I right on that?
They wanted to, yeah.
But the difference is gross error as opposed to...
Yes.
Just like you said, that, you know, a person does one additional non-justified increasing the classification duty. That, "Oh, this person does do X and we didn't say they did X," but that X doesn't qualify it to be an additional classification.
Which we only discovered when we started reviewing the request and that's how that came about.
So, the 62 accurately portray what the job does. These two didn't.
Well, two different things. Yes, according to that department head or elected official, I, I don't put the education in there. I don't assume an education level. If they said that that's it, then that's it. They would just, they wouldn't add it. I had like a red line change and the changes were not concerning anything that would change a classification.
And when's the deadline for these?
I asked for November 15.
And if we approve this, not to sound jaded, how many more are going to come up?
Well, that's, that's kind of a, a question that I'd like the council to visit, you know, and make a decision. Are we just going to make the decision on budget and it is chiseled in stone in August, September, October and doesn't change? John, when you're in business and you did your books, did you ever have any changes after a certain point, you know, did, were there revisions or, and I'm look, I'm a functional literate when it comes to this, but...
We make salary appropriations every week, every month.
Right. So, we're here as a body to review changes. There's nothing that says that it can't be changed.
But we already took a position on this is where I'm coming from.
But we can change.
So, anyone, do you have anything else that you want to?
No, I'll be quiet.
Do you, do you have anything else that, I just don't want it to become a debate. We know what the request is. I think we've all expressed our opinions. Does anybody else have anything that they want to say? Commissioners, do you have anything that you would like to add that hasn't been added since dating?
Brian Baird, Jones County Commissioner, I just think we, we need to understand that this position in, in the job description that it is now has been this way for a long, long time. The, the job description is correct in the duties that have been the responsibility. Any other county in this state, this position would be a county administrator position. For some reason, commissioners in the past chose to give this a different name than what it should have actually been given to start with. All we're doing is correcting the mistake that's been there for years that should have been caught long before now. But because now we are doing our HR basically in-house and, 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 and trying to maintain those costs by using, utilizing this auditor, this was caught. I caught it several years ago, but nobody would listen to me. It's just now we have the ability for someone to listen because we have an HR person, which is what we have tasked Tiffany with, is to help us with that. We have caught that now and, and legitimately been able to bring it forward at this time. It's a correction that should have been done years ago. And I just, I'm frustrated with it. I'm ashamed of myself. I'm ashamed of our whole establishment for not being more on top of this and doing this when it, when it should have been done. We have really placed back two people, two employees of this county unfairly and unjustly that should have never been done this way. And that's what bothers me more than anything is, is I feel responsible for that, that we didn't do what was right a long time ago to make this right and what it should be. And that's just where I'm at. That's just honest truth in the way that we've done things.
Is that everything, Mr. Walls?
No, I think everything's been discussed.
Anybody else? Amy, before I call for a motion, what's, assuming a first and a second's going to be made, I'd like a roll call vote, please. So, if no one else has anything they'd like to add, I'm prepared to take a motion.
Make a motion, item F2, number 1001-0122, approve as submitted.
Have a motion on the floor by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Have a, that's Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Have a second on the floor by Mr. Bates.
Do you have a discussion?
Additional discussion?
I have a clarification question. Is this, is this for the rewritten job description and title or does this include the salary piece as well?
No, just the job descri, they're asking for a job change now, but have been advised they will be back from, for, for the salary.
Thank you.
Immediately.
Can I clarify just one?
Absolutely.
Is this taking both these into consideration, both these positions, just commissioners? Or do we have to...
This is just yours. No, we'll, we'll work with Michelle next.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just yours. Okay, so we have a first and we have a second. Amy, would you do a roll call vote, please?
I with an explanation, which we have the ability to do. And it's respecting everything that, that John, John and I and Tiffany and everybody have been working on as far in the future for the salary study, that sometimes you just have to step back and say, "Could we have done it better?" And I think we could have done it better. And I take personal responsibility for that. You can kick me in whatever part of my body you want to for that, but I, I'm voting aye because I think you have to recognize when there are reasons for making a justification.
I'm going to give an explanation. I'm going to vote aye, just because we need to make right what was wrong. And although I, this was not, I don't take any blame of this, but I will make right what was wrong. And I hope this never happens again. I mean, you know, I, I feel like as a county, we have grown so much and there's been so much change that's been needed to be made because it wasn't happening before. But I, I can, I'm here, so I'm going to do what I feel is right because I'm here. But I'm not taking any of the blame.
Ryan Bates?
Aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Uh, John, just clarifying job title only, aye.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye. And I got big shoulders. I'll take all the blame.
Job title only, I'll vote aye.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the treasurer.
I'm not as tall as Kevin, so I'm going to move this microphone down. I am requesting a title change from deputy treasurer to bookkeeper deputy treasurer as determined by WIS after, WIS after their review, following an inadvertent error dating back to 2018. And just let me say, I'm with Commissioner Baird. I take this very personally, this error that was made. This job description was incorrect when I got here. Not having been here less than a year, it was time to, to resubmit these. I didn't even know my job, let alone that of my staff members. And I take that personally and I want to get it fixed. And I thank all of you that voted yes for that. And John, I would like to address one of your questions you had for the commissioners and, you know, didn't we already discuss this? And I was here in April and then I think I was here again in July. And I didn't do a good enough job explaining to council what had happened. You weren't able to get from point A to point B because I didn't describe the circumstances well enough. Basically, what is happening because of an error that I overlooked and was caught later in 2023 when the council asked for more job descriptions or to review your job descriptions, my new chief deputy and I caught the problem. And what is happening is for over eight years and before my time, we've been having a county employee do work that they're not getting paid for. And that's what makes this different than just other requests. These are, some of the requests are updates versus errors. These two job descriptions had very blatant errors in them. And it needs to be reviewed. It needed, I talked to the commissioners and they agreed this, this needed to be reviewed. WIS came back with that determination that yes, it was wrong, it needs to be fixed. Here's our recommendation. And I included that with my packet to council. So, the fact that I wasn't able to, to, to get that point across in these other two meetings, I apologize. I don't know, I don't know why, how, but I didn't get that point across. And what we didn't know, and I will say this for Commissioner Baird and Commissioner Walls, what we didn't know, we didn't know. But now we do know and it needs to be fixed and it needs to be corrected and it needs to be corrected immediately. What happens when there's a vacancy in this job and we can't advertise for the employee that we need, we can't advertise the correct education requirements, we can't advertise for the correct duties that weren't included or described years ago. It's a big problem. We have found it. We've identified it. WIS has agreed. I'm asking the council to please help get, what else can I do to get you from point A to point B so that you will help me correct this immediately? That's my request.
So, I'm going to ask for further discussion, but the further discussion is going to be identical to what we had over there, correct? There's no change. This is a, this is a sister situation?
Yeah.
Michelle, the specific correction you're talking about is, lies inside the job description and the work that's done, right? That's what we're talking about right now, is the job description itself that now encompasses everything this employee is doing.
The job, I'm not sure if I understand your question. I'm a little frazzled today. It's today, property taxes were due today, so it's been nonstop, non-busy all day with very unhappy people. That aside, I don't know that I understand your, your question. This job description that I inherited, that I didn't review correctly, did not list bookkeeping duties that my bookkeeper does.
That answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
So, what we're talking about is the correction to the job description only right now and the, and how that's classified, which would address the issue as far as when you advertise for...
And the education.
...that time come, WIS corrects that.
Right. And the education. Because you can't fill the position if you don't have it, right?
That's a new correction.
Yeah, the bookkeeping duties and there, and like, you had to have knowledge of that. It's not like an entry level where you can just learn bookkeeping. The, this position required previous experience in bookkeeping specifically and that was what was left off. So...
Okay, I got that.
Luckily, from the personnel committee, even though, you know, it was disbanded, we did, we found these two. Then that was the outcome of that is that people took the time and really were looking for errors and were looking for omissions in these positions and it, it was really helpful. And we've had discussions with department heads on this. So, I mean, that was the good that came out of that.
But the point is, should the need arise and that, and you have, you have to advertise for a new role, I post for it, that matches this description and the two are consistent?
What WIS is saying, yes. What I have, what is currently in place is incorrect and I would have to, I would not get the type of people that we need. So, yeah, this is what we need. And I will say this, Ron, dear, that I would not say your efforts went without merit because everything that we did in that personnel committee got us to the point where we are today.
Thank you.
It's just, you know, got local government, federal government. It's slow, moves slow, but we... It's slow, moves slow, but we, we eventually we get there and we get it done and we get it done right. So don't be too hard on yourself.
Instead of kicking the can down the road, we caught the can.
Right, don't be too hard on yourself.
Do you have something, Miss?
Yeah. Michelle, I wanted to thank you. I think you were eloquent all three times, so don't beat yourself up about that. But to our, our council, here's an elected official before us. They're in charge of all their employees. Their employees work for them at the pleasure of the elected official. So I think it demands a certain amount of attention and we're giving it tonight and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? Michelle, is that all you got, babe?
Do you have any other questions? I'll do my best.
My stance is the same as with the commissioners. Not that it's not deserved, I just don't think the timing is there. So my vote will be no, but Amy, I would like, once we get a first and a second, uh, I'd like a roll call vote on this as well, please.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Tiffany, please.
Motion to approve item F3.
That's presented. Have a motion on the floor by Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Deere. Roll call, please.
Melinda Grace, Ms. Mar.
Aye.
Jonathan Dittmers?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Jonathan Myers?
Aye.
Ron Bates?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, it looks like the final item that we have. Oh, number four, approval of sheriff's salary contract. I just about skipped that.
Good evening, Duane Burgess Johnson County Sheriff. It's a normal process every November to, uh, have my contract before the council commissioners have already reviewed it. The numbers on that, uh, is what you approved at budget time.
Thank you, Sheriff. It's more or less an administrative thing, correct?
Correct.
Any discussion? If not, I'm prepared for a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Uh, approval of the 2025 council meeting schedule. I'm sure everybody's had a chance to review that.
Move to approve the schedule.
Second.
For 2025.
Motion by Mr. Mallers to approve the 2025 council meeting schedule. Second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, discussion regarding board, board appointments for 2025. What discussion do we need to be having, Amy?
Just making sure you want them all advertised again for your board meeting.
And if you want them in person, right? For, because you guys have previously had board members.
Yeah, it would, my thoughts are if someone is interested in being on a board and they make an application that, you know, I think that it would be better that they appear in person or, uh, on, at least via Zoom, so we could talk to them personally. Is everyone in consensus of that, you think?
That's how the council has done it the last couple of years. The commissioners don't do that. Um, it's your, you're the appointing body, so it's your.
Well, I don't know that anyone on here wants to make it mandatory, but if, but we would certainly like that and appreciate that, I think, if that could be done.
Present?
Yes, if they are present. So that would be our request.
And, and since we have a new person here, we haven't gotten a list of what the appointments are.
Yeah, they're on the bottom of this.
Where?
They were in your packet and she gave us a hard copy of it.
So Plan Com, Plan Commission's me. Plan Commission alternate is you, Ron. Emergency Management Advisory is you. And Solid Waste is John Dittmers. Those are the council.
Yeah, and then all of the, yeah.
So I'm gonna, I would like to continue on the Plan Commission.
Are those the only ones we're considering, right?
Well, I was just talking about the actual boards. You guys could wait to do that.
That's what I thought we were talking about. We're talking about Board of Zoning, the what?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't advertise council member appointments.
No, but like the county park board and that stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not, not the liaisons, but the board appointments. You're talking about the board appointments, not the liaisons for next year.
Right.
Not the, well, not the council member appointments. Appointment of council members.
You're talking about everything north of that on this paper, right? You're talking about Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Zoning Appeals Alternate, County Park, Property Tax Assessment and that, that stuff, correct? Okay, yeah. So I think the consensus is, I mean, the appointments for council members, I'm, you know, we could discuss that. I don't think that'll be a problem, but I'm saying go ahead and advertise, request them to be here and then we'll go from there next month. Is that okay with everybody? If not, okay, good enough, Amy? We don't need to vote on that, do we? Okay. All right, moving on to the last item. Um, we all received a memo from Adam, I believe, and maybe Adam and Tiffany on, um, scope of services to be provided by the, uh, county attorney to council. And, um, I read it. It doesn't appear that there's any changes or anything has changed that, uh, from what we've discussed prior to. But, um, I wanted to have a discussion on the possibility, get everyone's thoughts on researching and retaining outside counsel for, legal counsel for this council. Not exactly how, sure how it works or how we would do it. I'm assuming it would be something like city attorney, the attorney that the, um, uh, assessor's office has. Uh, I did send an email out today to Anton Neft, president of the council, and asked the other 91 counties if anyone else did that, how they did it, what process they went through, how much money they pay. You know, is it a retainer once a year and then you pay them if you need them? Are they required to come to the meetings, that type of stuff? So I'll report back on that research later, but I guess I'd like each of you to speak on your opinions and your thoughts on even this being a possibility or something you feel we need.
Yeah, I, I'd like to talk a little bit about it. Um, we've been served well by our attorneys in the past and we appreciate it. And we come here tonight, we don't have any specific reason or need, but we all recognize that there could be. So I think that's what we're discussing here is what, what do we need to do to be prepared for that? And my opinion is that we find somebody locally here that has an electric car that can drive over here. And, and maybe get him on a retainer or something.
I agree, and even by Adam's own admission, that there's, there could be situations where there's a conflict. So I think it's, it's obvious it's something we need to do.
Can I ask Tiffany to weigh in and Adam to weigh in a bit?
Um, just like, um, Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Councilor Burton said, this is not, the, the scope of engagement letter is not a change from what's currently happening. So I, I guess I'm not sure on what level, I mean, you know, you're always open to retain the outside counsel. I'm assuming you mean for meetings and for, for the daily stuff? Or if you just mean for, um.
If we should need them.
Right, okay. That's, that's two different things, yeah.
Yeah, I'll use an example.
Which you, which was always the case.
Yeah, I'll use an example.
It's not different, which I think you guys even discussed.
Well, we had this, we, I'll use a simple example that occurred in my four years and it always occurred in my 24 years on Greenwood City Council that if you didn't agree with what the city attorney said, you knew who they were, who was buttering their brick. And the same thing here, that it's not disrespect for either one of you. But like on the personnel committee where we had disagreement about a particular ability of, of there being a human resource manager and everything else, that it provides the opportunity and the funding is there to ask for an opinion. Because you, you're, you guys' responsibility, as expressed very eloquently by Adam, was to the, to commissioners. And, uh, when it's a disagreement, then we're not attorneys, even if we were. Uh, you know, I, I, I suggest and, and I would support if I were here that there, that we use an outside attorney for those purposes. Like John said, there's nothing hanging on the bench right now. Uh, but, uh, there have been instances where, oh my gosh, do we need that outside, you know, information? And I think that's a wise move by the council.
Can I, can I speak real quick? I, and I, you know, my foot is halfway out the door, right? My, my last day is December 11th, but, you know, our intention was not to, to change the structure of how, you know, the legal department is operated. You know, currently in our capacity, we provide a ton of cost savings to the taxpayers by doing the minutia, the, the banal things that council needs from either salary ordinance, uh, drafting to review resolutions and local agreements, all the bond documents. We tag team with bond council. Um, so my, you know, as I'm, as I'm transitioning next, and I, I would just, you know, give my recommendation is, you know, if you are going to hire outside counsel, I think it, it would likely would just need to be on a retainer basis and only in those situations where there is a conflict that has arisen. And in the two and a half years I've been here, we've really have only had one issue. And we, even on that one, we got through it, right? There's going to, if you hire an outside counsel, you're going to end up costing, you know, the taxpayers a lot of money. And this is if you're doing it for like everyday things, attending all the meetings and, and answering the questions from the auditor that's tied to, to its role with the council. Um, there'll be duplicative efforts, um, essentially double billing by both, and, you know, bond council and then the count, the attorney for the council when it comes to bond, uh, documents. So, you know, I, we weren't trying to blow anything up. We were really just trying to kind of lay the, the framework for how this works, really only when there's conflicts. And there's very rarely are there conflicts, to be explicitly clear here. But when there are, it would behoove, you know, council to have, uh, its own representation to advocate for the council's interest and, and its rights, obviously, kind of thing. So I would, you know, you're not making decisions tonight, but having been in the weeds with our role with council and all the other elected officials and the commissioners, I, I think the way we're currently constructed is, is very beneficial to elected officials, this body, the board of commissioners, um, and ultimately for the taxpayers as well. There's a lot of cost savings, um, that they're, they're reaping with the way that we're currently constructed.
Thank you. Anybody else down here? Did we get an opinion, please? Melinda? What are your thoughts?
I gotta kind of mullet over.
Okay, John?
I'm good.
You're good?
Adam kind of summed it up for me.
Yep. Okay, so, um, we'll discuss it again. I'll bring back the information from the other 91 counties next month. And, uh, you guys be thinking about the process of getting someone. I too would prefer local, um, you know, how, you know, whatever guidelines. I think what Adam suggested is a retainer and then absolutely positively only use them if needed there is a conflict. So, but everyone be thinking about it and maybe we'll come back with some more solid one, two, threes and what to do moving into, to the new year.
I think, I think Bill, Bill on the wave is probably looking for.
I'm sorry?
I said, Bill on the wave is probably looking for.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Anything else? Not, uh, motion to adjourn?
Can I say one thing real quick? I, I won't be at the December meeting, so this will be my last time with council. But it's been a pleasure serving, uh, this body and, um, good luck in the year 2025.
Good luck, Adam.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Best wishes.
And you're headed out northwest, right?
That's correct, State of Washington.
With the Bears.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, everybody?
Aye.